Let us begin with opening statements and I'll start this end with Ruth Sterling.
Thank you, Eddie, and thank the little women voters for having this forum. I think it's very helpful. It hits our feet off the ground for the next two forums. I always like to think of myself as a candidate with old-fashioned values and a heart and voice for the people. I am resourceful and I'm responsive, and I come to you unencumbered. During the past four years, there's been a number of accomplishments in the city. We don't have dot rider back, but I was the only one on MTV that voted no on dismantling rider, but we do have something that is pretty close to it now, and that's rights for neighbors. So I'm very proud of that, and we have, I think, five meters funding, so they'll go forward regardless of whether the tax increase is okay or not. We have senior housing at Briar Crest Park, we'll be breaking ground on that very soon, that's 76 apartments and kind of a retirement facility. We have State Mesa, new fire station, new library and post office. So you can see that we've been busy. We have the start of a very beautiful civic center. It will be in October when we break ground for our new police facility, and that's because of the citizens of La Mesa, with the 76.7 percent they voted for Proposition D in 2004. I never forget that. The citizens of La Mesa deserve the credit for that fire station, and then we took notes of participation out off of the fire station and sold them, and we were able to build the post office and the library. So you can see how we built on what you gave us, and now the balance of the $25 million will go for the police facility. So we're very happy with what's going on in La Mesa on that part, but there's a lot more that needs to be done. I haven't seen the red flash yet.
No, you haven't seen the red flash, you got your first set.
Okay, so I want to stay on the council, and I would appreciate if you all would feel the same way and keep me there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sterling. Ms. Sterling?
Thank you. As the challenger, the new kid on the block here, I'm going to back up and tell you a little bit about myself. I'm 64 years old. I have a bachelor's degree in geology from San Diego State and a master's degree in geology from the University of Colorado at Boulder. I had a 36-year career in public service, in higher education, as a geology professor, a development director, and the last five years as theme of communication and fine arts, which was an interesting leap from geology. I attended Murray Manor. My husband, Mike Venus, and I married in 1979 and moved to Fletcher Hills in 1980 to raise our family. We've been in our Hoppy Street House since 1990. My qualifications for the job are 12 years in management in a public institution. I had the opportunity to develop a number of skills while in those various jobs. I wrote dozens of funded grants. I initiated and managed revenue generating programs in that setting. I managed 150 employees and a multimillion dollar annual general fund budget. I'm currently on the bond oversight committee for the Rosemont Way map community college district, and we're overseeing $400 million worth of capital projects that are taxpayer-funded. I'm vice president of the Rosemont College Foundation, which is a 501(c) organization. I'm on the board of the La Mesa Alliance, and I'm in my 10th year as geology trainer for the Trail Guides at Mission Trails Regional Park. In the year 2000, I was alumnus of the year at San Diego State University in the Department of Geological Sciences, and in 2005, I was awarded innovator of the year at Rosemont College. I think our big issues in this race, but not just this race, in the next several years, will be city finances of short term and long term, public safety issues, both crime and maintenance of EMT and other services in our city, and finally, redevelopment. What's La Mesa in the future going to look like? I think that's a critical task for the council in the next eight years. I look forward to being part of that. Thank you.
Can everybody hear me? If I stand up, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Okay. I'm Councilman Dave Allen, your servant in the city of La Mesa. Actually, I want to thank the Commission on Aging. I want to thank Eddie and Don, and I think this is actually my third forum here, and so I appreciate it all. You know, I have a little different take on things, I think, that I'm going to put here at the end, because I've got to start writing things down, is that I would hope when we get to the questions, when everybody asks, what's your council member, and Shannon's not a council member, what have council members, what have they done for you, the city here the last four years individually? Because some of the things that Ms. Sterling actually said, as a council-initiated thing, we did with our staff, I think it's to be a council member in the city of La Mesa, to be out there, to be working for the people, for your elected serve. You know, and quite honestly, there's, between the two incumbents, there's two things differently. Ms. Sterling didn't support the on the ballot tax increase, I did, but let me say, and I'll say it a couple of times today, the city council of La Mesa, do not raise your taxes. Put it on the ballot for the citizens to vote. No matter what happens on November 4th, we as a city are going to have to deal with that. And that's important to realize, because you know what? I understand the governor signed a budget today. You see what's been happening, as the United States will ask for it one how long. So it's important that we let the people, because when the people vote, they're the ones that are really telling us what to do. And this has really actually got a pretty nasty campaign here already. We've got some naysayers in this city, because as Liz is in the background, you turn around and you've seen, oh, Dave Allen wasn't going to run. Well, Dave Allen wasn't going to run, but he came back, he decided to run, because I'm not going to leave the city. I feel I'm unequitable. There's some things that have happened in this city, and there's a small, a little small group out there that, to my personal opinion, want to destroy the city. This is a great city we live in. Raise your hand, maybe people love this city. We've got a great city here. You know, and there's some little political stuff, and I can deal with it, but you know what? I brought this off the wall, because I've actually had to raise my hand when I was in the Army twice, when I was in the fire department, and twice as a council member, and I think this is important for everybody to realize, the day in December, I escaped from the data that gets sworn in, but this is what you have to say. It says, in my case, "I, Dave Allen, do solemn swear that I was supported to defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California." I got 30 seconds, that went quite fast, but the bottom line is, I'm here to serve the people of this city, so well, I'm really looking forward to your questions.
They're coming. Hold up your hand, and early, we'll pick up your questions.
Pass cards down. Just put the pass cards down now.
Okay. How do you compare the city of La Mesa's financial concerns to the city of Vallejo's, which was forced into bankruptcy this year? Dave, do you want to tackle that first?
Well, I would imagine, yes, I don't know, I don't know. Okay, that's all right. I don't know all the particulars there, but as far as bankruptcy, I guess compared to this city is, and I think maybe the question was directed, because it's always been directed, even Dick Reiter came here, he wants to compare La Mesa to San Diego, probably talking about pension plans and employee benefits and all that. They have definitely some major issues up there. La Mesa's not like that. La Mesa's actually aren't employees that will last in the county here. And I think what the difference between La Mesa and Vallejo is, if you only have so much money you can spend, that's all you can do. You can't just turn around and just continue to spend, spend, spend. We're a built-out city, Vallejo's a growing city, and they've got some major issues. Do we have major issues? Yeah, we've got a $4 billion deficit. That's why the sales tax is being placed on the ballot. And bottom line is, if the people say they don't raise, if they don't support the sales tax, we're laying people off. We're laying people off. It's going to affect maybe the senior center here. I would definitely, you know, public safety is number one responsibility for any official, but guaranteed, that's what's going to happen here. I think they probably spent, spent, spent what I read on that, and now they're reaping what they sowed.
Is he done?
Thank you, all right. The city of Vallejo apparently has a salary structure for public employees that's quite a bit more generous than ours, and I say apparently, the number $120,000, I know I read, is a base salary for fire personnel. Other employees were paid more. Their compensation packages were just out of sight. And what the city of Vallejo has done is chosen to go into bankruptcy, because when you go into bankruptcy, you get to rip open all of your employee contracts, they're no longer valid, and that's their tool, after all these decades of overpaying, is to end it and start with a clean slate. Now, I haven't been on the council for 16 years, as Mrs. Sterling has, so I'm not quite certain how La Mesa got to this budget deficit, but I'll tell you, we don't have to go into Chapter 11 as a city. It's not an option for La Mesa. Our employees are not overpaid as they were in Vallejo, and we don't want to get to the point where we have to rip this city apart and start building it from the ground up. We're not that bad off, and I don't think we'll go there. Thank you.
So, Vallejo is kind of like apples and oranges as far as the benefit packages. In Vallejo, they gave an enormous amount of retirement packages. The benefits were just huge. Their salaries were huge, and it broke the bank. They couldn't continue, they couldn't keep up with what they were paying now. As far as La Mesa goes, November 13th, 2007, and before that, the council was warned that we were heading for a deficit. At that point in time, on November 13th, at a council meeting, it was $1.5 to $2.5 million. The spread of $1 million troubled me. Also, on November, on April council meeting, 2007, Stat came forward with a recommendation to have our new logo and have it on all La Mesa cars, facilities, and to have that logo and to have this new branding. I had asked Dave Witt how much that would cost. He said ballpark figure, he couldn't say for sure, probably around $400,000. I voted no on that. It was a 4-1 vote, and I had stated that at this time, with crime on the rise, with negotiations ongoing with unions, we could not afford to take on this enormous project. There's time. Time is of the essence when you come to the dollars. That was November, that was April. November 13th was the firm fact of $1.2 to $2.5 million deficit. By the time it rolled around, we ended up with a $4 million deficit. So you can see, spending is a problem in La Mesa, and I have more to say on that.
Thank you. Thank you. This is, you know, a question, it's a question that I have. I don't know anything about Vallejo's success, or the organization, or up to scale than La Mesa. Does anybody know? I don't know. So, we have another question. What sources have been used to develop to remove the deficit, the structural financial deficit? And I'll let you start.
Thank you, Eddie. I suggested early on, in November of '07, October of '07, October 16th, 2007, I had requested an organizational chart. I was refused. The council did not give that to me. Their reason being is that the front page of every department in the budget book had the information that I wanted. It did not. I asked, I asked for a source of funding for each person in that department, whether it was general fund money, money, or CBT money, or various fees that pay their salary. I was turned down. I have the tapes. So, that was one of the things that I thought would be good to look at. Another thing was a hiring freeze for all departments except for police, to defer the general fund capital improvements where feasible. We just spent $2 million, excuse me, we just spent, two months ago, $1 million on a new fire engine. Now, can we defer these big projects? I think we have to. If you're complaining about no cash flow, then you need to defer some of these big items until we have some cash flow. The suspended equipment purchases that are over $5,000, retirement through attrition, that would be early retirement, and deferred consulting contracts. We spent $200,000 on Catherine Lou and Associates, just to see what the people of La Mesa would think about a three-quarters cent tax increase, and then $110,000 approximately on three flyers that went out. That's almost half a million dollars in my book, folks. No travel outside of the county, and suspend the $35,000 that is allotted to the La Mesa City Council. Every department has suspended all travel, and that includes our PB, our police department. However, the mayor refuses to give up that. I say be by example, not do as I say.
Thank you.
I think the question was about new revenue sources, and La Mesa, remember I said at the first, we've got to look at short term and long term. New revenue sources are the absolute necessity of long-term stability in this city. Not taxing the people, not cutting a few positions in the city, because it won't be enough. We need the right mix of retail in La Mesa so that we encourage people to shop here. Sales taxes are our single largest revenue base. If we have, for instance, an old lady, yeah, they've got one at Santa Chica. While you're here, then you shop at the La Mesa Target as well. You have to fix the right mix so the people will shop here. We need to revitalize La Mesa Village. I hope to see that the merchants there and the property owners will go for business and build, invest in the district, to be ID. I think the city can help this along by building a parking structure, not with taxes, but either as a certificate of participation or a lease revenue bond to bring more people downtown, the same way we did for Rosemont Center when the city built that parking structure. We need a business class hotel in La Mesa. The amount of TOT taxes generated by a 200-room hotel would be the same as sales taxes on $50 million of additional retail sales. That's significant. We need to win that for the city of La Mesa. When Rosemont Center is redeveloped, and those plans are starting to be made right now, we need to secure that revenue base and enhance it, and it'll be mixed use, whatever it is, we have to make certain that we have the same or better revenues from that site 10 years from now. We'll be dealing with that shortly. And we need to continue to pursue grants in the city. We brought in $850,000 last year from our grant writers within the city, and that helps to run some very vital programs for some of our older and our younger citizens. Let's make sure that we keep that up. Thank you.
Okay, I want to touch on a couple of things Ms. Sterling said, because I think it's important for all taxpayers in the city of La Mesa. We did spend $250,000 on a, going, or obviously $500,000, $250,000 on some logo. That did not happen. Not true. Untrue. As far as the community, $200,000 to put in property, propel with half no, not true. I'll give you the breakdown, we spent about $150,000 right now. $40,000 was actually earmarked, I used to say it was earmarked, but actually it was split every year, you know, every couple of years, we have a community summons here in La Mesa to get the input from the people, and we used $40,000 of that to go into there. And if everybody's seen the flyers there, and I think it's important, out of that, we've spent about 75, so totally spent $150,000. You know what? You want to look at this here, we had 2,000 people apply to this, and it was just certain things, and we'll get into them later on, I'm sure, with the property, the increase on the sales tax revenue, but you know what? The people spoke, and that's what we did it for. We can play going back and forth, and we used taxpayers' money to do it. You know what? Listen to the people in La Mesa, if you think of everything that happens in this city, all the commissions are made up of people. Commission on Aging is doing this summit today. We don't do anything on the city council without input from the city of La Mesa. And Ms. Sterling, and I'll take in, like I told you, the council, I think it's appalling, appalling, that number one priority of a public agency is public safety, and you're going to put on postponed buying a fire truck. That is horrible. Now, let me get on as far as the development. Actually, Shannon touched on some other things. I don't know if you all know that we changed the overlay, Zellman and I all know on Boulevard here a couple of years ago. We actually got suited, environmental suit ons. It's finally settled, ended up paying $50,000 to one individual, it's record, but anyways, that's going to change the whole corridor there. People have been around here for a while, you remember University Avenue, we had, people didn't want to change. Guess what? We included all the people, had hundreds of people come to the community center, so that's going to all change. Shannon spoke on the downtown parking structure. We just got a grant from Sanday to do a, you know, just to develop one. Rosemont Center, like she said, that's, in eight years, that's going to change. I know Sandy, the mayor's, have been involved probably the last four years, with the development's going to be there. Rosemont Hospital, they're trying to finish their project over there. That brings people in here, and downtown, the redevelopment down here, we got things happening in this downtown. And Buxton Company, we hired them to look at what people want in the city. So we don't do anything in this city without the people. And I'm going to make the point, anytime that you want to distort the truth, I'm bringing on it. It's not true.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. Not yet. I want to start with, Dave, what do you see as a viable solution to the problem of affordable housing, in particular, rentable housing for seniors?
Well, actually, we have a development that's been, you know, at development over there on, over at the little Briar Crest Park, the city's actually entered an agreement with the company, escapes me right now, and that's going to be a senior housing facility. I know for a fact that there's been some developers that were actually wanting to do some senior housing on Elton Boulevard, that actually had got stopped because of, you know, obviously, the same time you'd be building, developers might be doing. So there's, there's senior projects in the pipeline. I think that, I think it's great, you know, and this is where the sales taxes at work, kind of maybe I look at being a servant of the people. I think La Mesa being the 60,000 people, the way the economy's going now, the way the United States is going now, we need to get together, and we got to develop, and I don't know all the answers. We need to develop things as a community, and we stay together as a community, we're going to get things done. That's why that sales tax, if you vote for it or not, people, you know, that one that stays in the city of La Mesa, ain't getting ripped off by Sacramento, ain't getting ripped off by the federal government. We're going to have some money to do things in this city. That's important. As far as the other, I know that the United Methodist Church has stepped up, and they're doing some things for the youth and the seniors, so we need to be working with them, we're engaged. You know, we got that $100,000 grant here coming, plus the $50,000 we got for the variety program for the seniors and stuff. So we've got a lot of things going here. We need to be engaged with the public sector to take care of the youth, and like your question was, the seniors, and we're going to get there. I don't know the answers, how we're going to get there, but we're going to get there. And we got to be thinking outside the box, because people who've been thinking in the box, they've already jacked it up up there. So we're going to, we're going to take control of our own community. I really do believe that. Guys live in a good city. No matter what you hear up here today, we live in a good city. It's a well-run city. The staff is great, and I want to touch on one thing on that senior housing deal. Guess what? That other $1,000 we're getting on for transportation for our seniors, guess where that came from? That came from the staff writing the grant for it. So you want to start cutting staff positions, we're not going to get the grants we need for our seniors.
Okay, thank you. Well, Dave hit on a number of the different developments that are coming online. If you read the paper this morning about housing costs, and, there's some dance music, on the housing costs and what we all know is happening, mortgages, it used to be that 30% of your income went to housing, and it's clearly higher now. That impacts our seniors as well as, I would assume, all of us in this room, in one way or the other. It's not you, it's your children, it's your grandchildren. I do believe that smart developments such as the Fairfield Project and Fletcher Parkway actually answers part of the question here, because other expenses can be brought down with smart housing, and we've already started investing in those. For instance, the apartments, there are a certain number of apartments at Fairfield that are relegated for low income. That was required in the building plan. Secondly, people who live there are trolley ride away from a lot of places, they don't have to get out there and put $4 a gallon in their tank. There are going to be an elevator and a short ride walk away from a retail center. So if you can't totally control housing costs, and I don't see how the city of La Mesa can in the larger picture, you can help people control their overall costs and maintain their budgets, and that's what it's all about. We do have Section 8 housing in this city, and we have other opportunities for seniors that Dave has touched on. It's not an easy time, but I think, and maybe some of you are aware of this, but half of the housing in La Mesa is in multifamily dwelling. Do you know that? We've done a great job in La Mesa of dotting those around our community, instead of making massive apartment blocks in like a city adjacent to us, so that there are rentals of all levels available within our city borders. Could we do a better job? Probably, and that's something we need to look at. That's kind of my view on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, the questions that they have, they're answering is about affordable housing, in particular, rental housing, and then you can test some extra time to read that.
Okay, thank you. The, on the
The, um, on the, on the housing issue, we...
What? I said we got to be personal with anyone.
Oh, with the, uh, bike, oh no, just the facts, Sam. With the five hundred and twenty-seven apartments, uh, that we have now on, on Fletcher Parkway, that's a lot. That's a lot what La Mesa is doing, although I believe they're expensive to rent. Uh, even fifteen percent of those five twenty-seven apartments, they are expensive. But they, uh, right on the trolley line, I think that it's going to probably be desirable for young people going to college. We have twenty-five other, um, mixed, uh, projects. We have twenty-five other projects, uh, in the pipeline, some of which are mixed use. And, uh, so I think La Mesa is redoing its part in providing two houses for, for people moving into the city. We haven't had a huge population increase. We're about fifty-seven thousand, uh, round number. So that isn't a big increase from nineteen ninety-two. Uh, in response to, I think that the rebut, the comments over here to my right were a little bit, were a little bit, um, uh, mixed up. For instance, I can say two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is what the logo cost. I said that the estimate would be that Dave would have given me approximately four hundred thousand dollars. I didn't say we spent that. I said that that was a huge project, a huge commitment that we started on that I voted no on. Catherine Lou was two hundred thousand dollars without doubt. We voted on that. I voted no. And the three flyers were a hundred and ten thousand dollars. On January the fifteenth, two thousand and eight, we had a workshop. The workshop was a follow-up from November the thirteenth, when staff brought forward on November the thirteenth, thirty-six revenue enhancement ideas. We discussed them to a limited amount, but there were so many that it was requested that we have a special workshop. We did, on January fifteenth, and I'll speak more about that when it's my turn.
Thank you. The next question is, what is your definition of smart growth as good redevelopment and smart development?
Would you, I mean, versus redevelopment?
What is your definition of smart growth as good redevelopment? Do, in other words, do you mean the, the smart growth, the capitalized, uh, system that people talk about is good redevelopment?
It's one part of redevelopment. Redevelopment zones can refer to totally commercial zones, and the way they're financed and taxed and brought online, special opportunities for commercial developers and special taxes to help pay for the infrastructure. That's one whole definition of redevelopment. The City Council sits as a board for any redevelopment zone that we create. And those are generally positive things, and again, as Dave pointed out, we have a lot of input from boards, uh, men and women, by citizens who gave us information on that, and the desecability of redevelopment. Smart growth generally means putting denser housing along traffic corridors and near areas where consumer opportunities are available. Um, I personally think the Fairfield Project, which is the, uh, bravada, I guess is the name of the apart- the apartments. Remember that? I personally think that's our first big experiment in smart growth in La Mesa in recent times. Uh, the project won awards, it was done within TDB, it was done with Sandag. There was a lot of involvement of other groups in several years of the planning. And now, we'll see, does it work? Do people leave their cars at home? Do they use public transportation? Do they shop locally? And do they like it? Will they pay these rents? Will they stay? Will they be good citizens in the City of La Mesa? We're going to live our way through it, and we're going to find out. But it's the poster child for smart growth in this city. If it works, we might look at other opportunities. If it doesn't work for La Mesa, then we'll know.
Thank you. Mr. Sterling?
Well, I will almost say that I think we're probably the, the law for San Diego County as far as smart growth. We continue to, I, I think we have two million, you know, there's a lot of figures, that I believe we could receive about two million dollars from the Fairfield Project that Shannon talked about. That was a joint venture with MTS, uh, Sandag and the city. Uh, University Avenue, that's another place we're looking at, uh, smart growth. I guess the point I'm trying to make is really, it's great for us in La Mesa. We're thinking outside that box I was talking about, um, Shannon, you're right as far as the Fairfield Project, but I believe it was my, start of my second term. You know where the, um, um, Train Museum is, that condominium complex right there? That was another smart growth. And way before, I think I was, I'll say I was born, but, uh, I was born actually over here off of Maya. That was a, I was actually won some awards, so if you look at nine point two square miles, see? We've done a lot of smart growth, and, uh, I, I think that's a key. I think another immediate add to that is people can not have to put their gas, you know, on the trolley to, uh, drive downtown San Diego, which is crazy. I think another thing with the smart growth, this council, um, I'm saying, three years ago, we actually, um, developed a, a park, park feast with, uh, builders. So I believe we're going to receive, um, close to about half a million dollars from the Fairfield Project. It's actually going to be going into our, our parks. So just because we're building something over off Fletcher Parkway, it really actually encompasses the whole city what we do. So, um, like I said, I believe we're the poster child for it, and we'll continue to look at, you know. I think, uh, anything smart growth is, we're built out of the City of La Mesa, so anything we're going to do, anything is going to be, uh, in build or an A to C going up. But obviously, you don't have to worry about it going up, because we have a height requirement, and actually, there's, uh, a couple of projects that have been, that have done, uh, the works, and actually hasn't gotten to council, so I can't really speak too much on it. But, you know, where the old, uh, Bobstall, uh, area is over there, I think it's for the, the, um, post two eighty-two and all that, there's actually a developer looking at doing something right in there, too. So we have a lot of good things, that just gets me back to, you know, even though we're in tough times, the city is still booming and going ahead. And, uh, you know, it's, it's a great city, so I'm not going to sit back, and I'm not going to turn around and listen to these naysayers, I'm going to start my own good statement. And we've got a lot of you here that live here a lot longer than I have. And you know that, I think the main thing, talking to smart growth for the City of La Mesa, is long as we stay together as people, and we have these commissions working with our council, and holds this council to the fire at their feet, you know what? We're moving ahead. Thank you.
Uh, smart growth, um, would be live and play, um, and work, uh, all together, so you, you don't have to drag your car on freeways to someplace. You have transportation right there. We have smart growth on One Avenue, that's in the, the new place there, over there, Tamina Drive project. We have it here now on Fairfield. So we do have a lot of smart growth in our, in our city. The, um, Fairfield City and FTVB, they started the project, three of them, in two thousand and three. And the Fairfield Project was economic development for the City of La Mesa. It will bring in a million dollars annually. That, after all, folks, is one-third of the four million dollar deficit that we're facing. That's twenty-five percent right there.
Thank you. Now, uh, this, this is a, um, question for you. It's just, what role did you play in getting the money for the ride share, and I assume for the rights from the people?
The right, the right for neighbors came from the Sandag grant, uh, that was the initial fifty thousand dollars. Um, I played a role in that, just by the essence of me on the council. And if I had been on Sandag, um, my role would have been the same. It was, it was given to the City of La Mesa.
Thank you. I have, I have one more question, and, um, it's what major quality do you believe makes you a candidate, and why? So if we added that to the agreement of the statement, you, you would do that? Would you like to do that? Unless, unless you and the audience would like to, to make some comments in person to the group, we have time, and, uh, but we have time to answer questions. So it's, it says in the thing that it depends on the moderator, whether it's formal or... So, uh, we're going to start with the first place. Let's start with, with Shannon O'Donnell again, because we started this and that in, in, uh, in the middle, or...
Excuse me. This is, are you, this is a...
This is your, this is the wrap-up question.
So you want to have a question?
Give her four minutes.
Four minutes, okay.
Or, or ten. So if you... Whatever, whatever you want to wave your flag.
Okay, I'll let it fly.
When you get tired.
Give it five.
Okay. All right, gosh, I prepared for three, so, you know, I'll throw in my, my major quality...
But you're going to be a politician, so you can do that.
Yeah, oh, there you go. Okay. I wanted to tell you why I'm running for La Mesa City Council. Over thirty-six years of public service, I had a fabulous opportunity to learn a lot of things. I was in the classroom, then I was the development director, then back to the classroom, became a dean. Uh, and I, I was lucky enough to acquire a lot of experience and I think some significant skills. And I did it at taxpayers' expense, most of it was paid by the state of California. I gave as good as I got, and I'm proud of those skills, and I'm humbled to the fact that I had the opportunity to acquire. I'm running because I'd like to be a student. I'm not ready to be retired, retired, okay? Uh, I'd like to, uh, turn those to governance in the City of La Mesa and bring those talents to help solve a lot of the issues that we have, and also uncover the opportunities. We can't just look at problems and negatives. We have to look at opportunities that will pull us forward and out of some of those situations. So I think financial skills, uh, people's skills, sticking to budget, respecting the taxpayers' investment. You do it on time, and you do it under budget, and you do it with respect to all employees, whether you disagree with them or not. That's where I come from, and that's what I'd like to bring. Sixteen elected officials in East County endorsed my candidacy. They come from the Helix Water District, the Rosemont Healthcare Board, the La Mesa Spring Valley School Board, the Rosemont Union High School District, from the Rosemont Quinac and Community College District. I have four endorsements on the La Mesa City Council, and that of our Assemblyman Joel, Joel Anderson in the Seventy-Seventh District. I'm speaking with my major qualification here. I'm a consensus builder. I think with the challenges that this city has in the future and in the opportunities, we need to work well with one another. We need to work hard, we need to care what the taxpayers think, and we need to listen to you. In the end, we need to work together. I think those sixteen endorsements speak to that fact. And the fact that as we move forward with this city, we're going to get the best bang for our block, for our citizens, if we're talking to these overlapping agencies. If we're able to make certain that you get the water, that you get the healthcare program, that we can talk to the schools when we need to. Those are all important things, and I've already built those bridges. So that's, I think, really what I bring to the table. My motto in this campaign is preserving the best of who we are, working together for our future. You'll see it on my materials, because I believe it. I'm serious as a heart attack about that. I'd like you to go to my website, odunforlamesa.com. You can, you can email me at shannon@odunforlamesa.com. You can come visit booth four oh seven at Oktoberfest and talk to me directly. I'll be there all three days, and I look forward to hearing from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Dave?
Well, I think that anybody who knows me, I think they would say that Dave's got pretty good integrity. When I say that, I think of my, I think everybody knows me, and if I make a mistake, I would tell you I made a mistake. How I made a few mistakes as your council member. I have publicly, I'm actually surprised that I didn't come out. Today, I'm a last man up there on, uh, East Ridge. I publicly got in front of it, apologizing to the gentleman that, uh, thanks for done to. So that's part of life, I'm not a perfect person. You know, I think, uh, I think I've done a good job for the people of La Mesa. You know, I sat down, I, because to me, to be a council member, it's not really just going to a council meeting twice a month and voting. You need to turn around, and you need to be engaged in a day-to-day basis for your city. So I kind of made a couple, I made a list. I kind of astonished myself a little bit, not that I pat myself on the back, but the point I'm trying to make is that it's just not about being a council member. It's about being in the community and working for your community. Because you know what bottom line is? I live here. My grandkids play in the parks here. So I got a lot invested here, too. But you know what? I'm going to read a few of these, and I'll just kind of touch on them. You know, we had our first teen job fair last year with the youth. That was with me getting with the youth. You know what? We got three hundred people there, and the first one is going to grow this year. Um, which Woods had touched on, we probably should have said for, uh, you know, what's good for the city as far as bringing, uh, monies in? The Chamber of Commerce, you know, we had, we, we lost our chamber years ago. We were part of the East County Chamber. I was on that thing for a year and a half with, with the blessing of the mayor and a couple of council members. You know, we have our own chamber back. You know this chamber in the, uh, downtown, it's, it's the first time in a long time, they're doing a joint Oktoberfest, and that's people inside this city. As a last, and the mayor is there, and I'm going to ask her again, have a last council meeting. We have two hundred business members in our own chamber. This is in about six months. That's incredible. I'm happy to say, as far as June, all our fire engines have paramedics on them. Took me eight years, I'm not too proud of that. That's the way government works. We've got paramedics in all our engine companies. You remember when I ran in two thousand, that was one goal? I'm happy to say that I turned around and, uh, got that, got that done. Historical society library, surprised that wasn't brought up. That was a big thing in favor. The naysayers about changing Allison. We never changed Allison, we looked at the funds. Well, it never changed. You know what we got out of that? Historical society is going to have a video library, that should be happening any day. That was a good thing. Intergenerational Games, I'm bringing it up tonight, been involved in that the last few years. That's the youth and the seniors together. Senior Olympics, big thing of mine. MIA flags, when I say MIA flags, I'm always going to have to get on it in here. It's this little pin I wear, very important to me. Prisoner of war, missing in action. You know that, you know, and I, you know, I probably say one of the top three things that I've been able to do that I feel blessed to be a council member for you is down, down in Sandag, overlooks San Diego, where all the big muckety-mucks in San Diego County is. City of La Mesa, people donated MIA flag. Because folks, without those people that MIA, and there's still a lot of them missing, a lot of them killed, we wouldn't be where we are today. Very important to me. Public safety workshops, you remember we had that sexual predator stuff here a couple of years ago? Barry Jansen no longer in the council. Barry and I get some, got some organs passed, and now we actually went throughout the city, adjutant of the school districts, and lesson of the council. We got that. I sit as the Public Safety Chair for the League of California Cities. I've done that for two years, so that affects what happens in La Mesa public safety-wise. New dog run. We used to have one dog run, that's one thing I got to accomplish my first term. Well, you know, the second term, I have to say, we got another dog run. Prisoner reentry, as we know, that now we have the budget passed, we're going to, there's going to be, the governor wants to release twenty-three thousand prisoners back in society. Well, I, that's kind of a low figure, because the federal judges might release forty thousand back in there. I have ever upset that all the cities of the state of California are on that condition. You know, Part One Seventy-Two, if you've attended any council meetings, I've been beating that horse to death since I was president of San Miguel Firefighters. You know, that's generating sixty million dollars in the City of La Mesa, and a half cent sales tax that we pay, that we pay, that we pay. Guess what? You know how much we got out of that sixty million? Two point five. I'm still fighting, I'm fighting tomorrow, actually, on it. And they want to turn around, they want to put a parcel tax on you for a county fire authority. I hope you don't vote on it, because we're getting, we're getting, the fire service, we're getting hosed again by the supervisors, because they're not taking care of it, they're not taking care of their responsibilities. So the point I'm trying to make is, I work hard for you, I'd love to be reelected. It's really not about Dave, it's about representing your interests in the city. And I think I've done that to the best of my ability, and I hope to do it again.
Thank you.
Well, uh, it's, uh, I, first I want to try to play the little catch-up here in about four minutes, and that is, I told you, I would tell you...
Five, you got five.
I do, okay. I told you I would tell you about the, uh, uh, burger on, when November the thirteenth, two thousand and seven, when staff brought thirty-six revenue enhancement. On January, January fifteenth, we decided that, at that date, they decided that January fifteenth... On January fifteenth, we decided that, at that date, they decided that January fifteenth, we would have a workshop. They took off work. They went there to hear the workshop on these revenue enhancements. We started at eight oh one AM. Sandy Curl, the city manager, she talked until, from eight oh one until nine fifteen, nine eighteen AM. She knows that her finish immediately. Councilman Allen jumped out and said he, he made a motion for a sales tax increase, seconded by Ernie Ewan. I voted no. It was a four one. That thing took off like the cadillacs. And that's where it is today. So I wanted to get the record on that. Thirty-six, we came there for thirty-six debate on what enhancement should we have? And there was no discussion. I'm very disappointed and I can't let that go. Because Sandy talked, he made a motion, it was seconded, and it was done, baby, done. And now people were facing as to whether they want the sales tax increase, the three quarters to bring in the city seven million dollars annually, but I say stop spending. We're all going to have to tighten our belts. And what have I done in the last four years and before that? I have represented the people of this city. When all the chips were down and it was not popular, I represented the people and I took the abuse from four men on that council. But I never, ever relented. I support the people and I continue to do so, whether it was blasting on the Hilltop project, the, taking the rights away from the Chris Tanner incident, the El Paso project, a measly little half pager and putting fifteen houses on it. And four of them retail mixed in with them. I voted no. I support the people. You have a voice on that council and that is through me. Sixteen years on the council, never absent, never late, shows my commitment. It shows my dedication to the people of La Mesa. I am not afraid to vote against the popular tide. I will stand on my principles and not be stampeded into a decision that does not represent my philosophy, which is maintaining the highest quality of life possible in a city that I love. And I am honored to serve you. I would say, I think the best gauge for the future is past the eight.
Can I clarify one thing? Because I was accused of something I didn't do.
None of you.
Okay.
I'm done. No, I want to thank you all for coming. You can ask Dave to afterwards, but if you want to clarify, sure, he'll stick around to hear you. And thank you all for coming. Earlier I heard someone say that the crowd is small but significant. And I think you've made very significant changes. And I'm glad to see you all and I expect you to keep on watching smart growth and finding out everything you can about our Dallas. Because this is a very critical election for a number of people, particularly in the city of Loma del Rey because of opposition to Jay Z.
No.
Yeah. Sorry. And, and opposition to you, the high school district, non-teacher, and all those, and S R P, the fifty cent parking fee. So all of that is critical to all of us and, and always going, but watching activists is even more. So thank you and thank you.